If you're the meeting organizer, press star now. You're now joining.
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five.
Thanks. I guess there's their name. College of League is to defy of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation another, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Musso?
Here.
Commissioner Capazola?
Here.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Lodes?
Here.
Deputy Director Romero?
Here.
Director Albrecht?
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to open the public comment on resolutions only?
All favor?
Aye.
Anyone who'd like to vote for your wife, be your five minutes of just stating their name and where you'd vote, and it's a couple of... It's a way ahead, I'm jumping ahead here, so it's all right. All right, can I, do you want to read the, any cross parts?
We don't have that for now. Commissioner? We're going to resolution twenty twenty-three dash three fourteen, resolution authorizing payment of bills. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Now we're going to review the items for the meeting.
We're going to off here, so bear with us here.
The top of the agenda should be the May ninth meeting.
All right, so let's, now we'll review the agenda, the meeting coming up.
Resolution one three six eight five, resolution authorizing a second amendment to the agreement for the direct housing and rehabilitation center services contract between the county of Cumberland and the county of Hudson with respect to the housing of Cumberland County adult inmates at Hudson County Correctional and Rehabilitation Center and providing correctional rehabilitative services.
Is anybody talking or anything, or? Just, I'll make a comment. We, we have, we are still working through the jail issue with getting closer and we're waiting for our consultants to come through to, because meanwhile, we've been approached back with Hudson again, which is actually the most affordable option, and we still have a book of what, two hundred, two hundred ten, two hundred thirteen?
Three hundred.
Three hundred, it's up there, so we're going to continue, we don't have an alternative right now, so that's, that's the reason why we're, and they're very, they're very nice to us right now, because everybody else is bailing on them, so, you'll leave it on the consent agenda and go from there.
Resolution one four one five zero, resolution authorizing amendments to the bylaws of the Youth Services Advisory Council.
Anybody have any objection?
Resolution one four one eight zero, resolution exercising first and final option to renew contract for providing preventative maintenance and repair services for the security door systems at the Cumberland County Jail, bid number twenty-two dash oh three, resubmission two.
Yeah, read through it, anyone have some objection?
Resolution. Resolution one four one nine one, resolution awarding contract for, it's just a pending.
There, I'll, I'll chime in on that one, so there's three, three or four on here that we have opening dates coming up, ones for generator services, drainage pipes, janitorial goods, and then I think the only other one was grant writing, but I think that was filled out completely, but ordinarily we would have those in the titles, it must have gotten missed this time, but.
It's going to be a future, anything that's not titled or that, it could be easy, but we should pull it off the consent agenda, it should not be on there, just put them in the back side.
Okay.
All right, so we don't want to, there's what the question.
Because they're just lying.
Same thing with number five.
Same thing with number five, one four one nine two. Resolution one four one nine eight, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing video recording services for the Cumberland County Commissioner Board Meetings, RFP twenty-two dash fifteen, resubmission. Resolution one four one nine nine, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing global positioning system satellite-based offender tracking services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections, RFP number twenty-two dash nineteen. Resolution one four one two oh one is the same, we have it open. Resolution one four two zero two, resolution authorizing the request for proposals, proposals use of competitive contracting for providing concessions, sorry, I was timing, vending machine services. Resolution one four two zero four, resolution declaring one Hassler Dynamic Scale System, DS dash HR, serial number zero zero four nine JD seven five zero five two five, serial number zero 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 JS six B zero eight one nine, serial number four two zero zero two zero two three eight four, and one Hassler M thirty-three hundred folder inserter, serial number one three FN twenty-two thirty-eight as surplus and unneeded property and authorizing turnover to the CCIA for recycling. Resolution one four two oh six, resolution exercising option to renew contract for providing one-stop operator to coordinate the New Jersey one-stop career centers in the Cumberland County Salem Cape May workforce development area, RFP twenty-one dash eleven.
Can you pull that off the consent agenda?
What does that mean, sir?
That's a question, because number.
Resolution number one four two zero nine, resolution authorizing the submission of a project proposal to the New Jersey Transit for NJJRC grant program. Resolution one four two one one, resolution authorizing purchases from state contract vendors. Resolution one four two one two, resolution exercising second option to renew contract for providing techni- technology consulting and telephone internet related services for the county of Cumberland, RFP number nineteen dash sixteen. Resolution one four two one three, resolution off, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing out-of-school youth program services for the Cumberland County Department of Workforce Development, RFP number twenty-two dash twenty-four. Resolution number one four two one four, resolution awarding a contract for providing grant writing and related consultant services for the county of Cumberland, RFP number twenty-three dash oh seven, resubmission. Resolution one four two one five, resolution amending resolution twenty twenty-three dash three oh five, a resolution amending and authorizing the award of a non-fair and open professional service contract for engineering service support for the P twenty-five seven hundred MHZ digital trunked radio system for Greenwich, Cedarville, JCPhasse Engineering and Vinland Water Tank.
Can you pull that off the consent agenda?
Resolution one four two one six, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing in-school youth program services for the Cumberland County Department of Workforce Development, RFP number twenty-two dash twenty-five, resubmission. Resolution one four two one seven, resolution granting approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Human Services for the SFY twenty-four jail medication assisted treatment reentry initiative.
Can you pull that off the consent agenda also?
Resolution one four two one eight, resolution authorizing approval to accept a grant award from the Southern Shore Regional Destination Marketing Organization for marketing programming. Resolution one four two one nine, resolution approving budget amendment Southern Shore Regional Destination Marketing Organization grant, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Resolution one four two two zero, resolution approving budget amendment FY twenty-twenty-four Personal Assistant Service Program, twenty-three thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. Resolution number one four two two one, resolution exercising first option to renew contracts for providing supportive services and transportation for children, adults and families funded by the Cumberland County Department of Human Services, Human Services Advisory Council, RFP twenty-two dash twenty-two. Resolution one four two two two, resolution exercising first option to renew contracts for providing supportive services and transportation for children, adults and families funded by the Cumberland County Department of Human Services slash Human Services Advisory Council, RFP dash number twenty-two dash twenty-two, resubmission.
Can you, can you pull both these off, if they can come up?
Are there any, you taking more questions?
Yes, so also, the third one too, so it'll be all three of them.
Do you want me to read that one?
It has to be the fourth one too, so.
Do you want me to read them, or just?
You should read, let's see.
One four two two three, resolution approving various change orders to contracts for providing supportive services and transportation for children, adults, and families funded by Cumberland County Department of Human Services slash Human Services Advisory Council. Resolution one four two two four, resolution approving various change orders to contracts for providing supportive services and transportation for children, adults, and families funded by the Cumberland County Department of Human Services, Human Services Advisory Council, resubmission twenty-two dash twenty-two. Resolution one four two two five, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract to provide voting machine programming, testing, and support services for primary election and November, November general election.
Can you pull this off also?
Resolution one four two two seven, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for info.
Please, just from the back, just for clarity, okay, just for clarity, a lot of resolutions will be pulled off, and there's always a question, what's going to happen once they've been pulled off?
Well, they would be, we can discuss them now if you want, or after we get done this, we can discuss them.
Then we'll go back over it, okay.
Yeah, and, and the reason why, because if there's a question which I have, if there's action taken next time we vote on it, they're off the consent agenda, the purpose of the consent agenda, there is no discussion about it, and sometimes I make comments, it's okay, but I make comments enough, so.
Yeah, and I'm always asked a question, and I'm not, I'm not here to help to explain as to why I ask.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's not always negative, it's sometimes just a negative, if there's a reason why to do it, so, consent agenda, we're not discussing it, so.
Resolution one four two two seven, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for info share court order interface and victim witness suite programming services for the Cumberland County victim witness advocacy. Resolution one four two two eight, resolution approving budget amendment and change in title and text, twenty twenty-three retired and senior volunteer program, seventy-five thousand dollars. Resolution number one four two three one, resolution granting final approval of the Kincaid Farm application to sell development easement. Resolution one four two three two, resolution granting final approval of the estate of Ralph Francesini Farm, application to sell development easement. Resolution one four two three three, resolution designating the month of June twenty twenty-three as gun safety and violence awareness month.
Can you pull that off also?
Resolution one four two three four, resolution authorizing grant agreement with the cooperation for national service providing operational funds for the Cumberland County Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. Resolution one four two three five, resolution authorizing application and acceptance of the FY twenty-one Justice Assistance Grant Program from the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Office of the Attorney General for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office. Resolution one four two three six, resolution canceling expired contracts for May twenty twenty-three covering materials, services, and supplies. Resolution one four two three seven, resolution amending resolution twenty eighteen dash one seven four and authorizing execution of an amendment to ACE funding agreement for the Cumberland County, Cumberland Salem Cape May Counties Workforce Development Board. Resolution one four two three eight, resolution authorizing an agreement between Cumberland County for the Office on Aging and Disabled and Fairfield Township for the purpose of supporting a senior nutrition program at the site of the Fairfield Township Senior Center.
Can you pull that off too?
Resolution one four two three nine, resolution declaring one Robinair AC Machine Model Ford Tech seven hundred serial one nine zero nine three, asset number seven two three two, and one Snap-on Machine Model EEA C three two four B, serial two oh three five two eight, used by the Office on Aging and Disabled as surplus and unneeded property and declaring it e-waste for CCIA recycling. Resolution one four two four one, resolution approving budget amendment WIC seniors farmer's market nutrition program twenty twenty-three, eleven thousand two hundred dollars. Resolution one four two four two, resolution authorizing approval to accept a grant award from the New Jersey Department of Health for the senior farmer's market nutrition program. Resolution one four two four three, resolution approving contribution of aid to the New Jersey ARC. Resolution one four two four four, resolution approving a contribution of aid to the Cumberland County Guidance Center. Resolution one four two four five, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between the county of Cumberland and participating governing bodies for street cleaning services.
Can you pull that off also?
Resolution one four two four six, resolution authorizing assignment of all contract negotiations involving FOP one ninety-four to the firm of Blaney, Donahue, and Weinberg PC. Resolution one four two four seven, resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the New Jersey Department of Human Services to implement the county option hospital fee program. Resolution one four two four eight, resolution approving budget amendment Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, one hundred thousand dollars. Resolution one four two four nine, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the city of Bridgeton for the Kohanzig Zoo. Resolution one four two five zero, resolution waiving application fee to be paid by the Cooperative Fair Association for the use of the Cumberland County Fairgrounds for the twenty twenty-three Cumberland County Fair.
Can we pull that off also?
Resolution one four two five one, resolution authorizing assignment for witness representation for deposition testimony in lit, in litigation matter. Resolution one four two five two, resolution authorizing assignment for witness representation for deposition testimony in a litigation matter. Resolution one four two five three, resolution authorizing assignment of the matter of investigation of a complaint made by an employee of the Cumberland County, the county prosecutor's office. Resolution one four two five four, resolution amending resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-eight, or twenty twenty-eight, two twenty-eight, authorizing a contract for providing COVID testing services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. Resolution number one four two five five, resolution authorizing application to the New Jersey Department of Children and Families for renewal of the County Social Services Block Grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, grant number twenty-four O D F R. Resolution one four two five seven, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for expert witness services in connection with a litigation matter of Brown Clark et al versus Charles Warren for the county of Cumberland, USDC District of New Jersey, twenty colon seven nine oh seven. Resolution number one four two five eight, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter of Todd Ford Jr. v. Warden Smith, Cumberland County, US District Court, docket number one colon twenty dash CB dash one two six five five, and one colon twenty colon CB dash eight eight six three. Resolution one four two five nine, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter of Brown Clark et al v. Charles Warren, US District Court, docket number one colon twenty dash CB dash seven nine oh seven, in accordance with NJAC five colon thirty dash five point three through NJAC five colon thirty dash five point five. Resolution number one four two six zero, resolution amending resolution twenty twenty-one dash four three five, authorizing the award of non-fair and open professional service contract for expert forensic computer consulting services in connection with litigation matter of Brown Clark et al v. Charles Warren for the county of Cumberland. Resolution number one four two six one, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in a litigation matter in accordance with NJAC five colon thirty dash five point three through NJAC five colon thirty dash five point five.
Does anybody have any discussion on any, any consent agenda?
I can't hear you.
I'm going to be in the public works on Thursday, before this equipment is moved, I want to take a look at it to determine if something's going to be traction.
Yeah, because sometimes you can tell you're going to get doing stuff, you know, if you give credit.
Exactly, sometimes you're a failure. So, I'll be there on Thursday, so I'm going to take a ride and take a look at this equipment, because this equipment, you're looking at about fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars worth of, so I want to make sure.
But we can't sell it.
Exactly.
Well, that's, that'll take it, that could give you a credit for, and then give you, because you buy a new one.
Well, instead when you get a new one, they might give you three thousand dollars credit for turning those in, so, you know.
So essentially step on, they're only looking to sell you something.
And Robin Air is a top, top line.
And I have a question about fifty-two, or it's about the COVID testing, I mean, what's the news that we've been hearing, are we, so, you doing all that COVID testing, are we required to COVID test it?
Yeah, so right now under the federal order from Judge Hillman, in the Brown case, we are required to continue testing, it is on the radar, and it's been brought to the attention of council, that we would like to discuss it as soon as possible, but for now we're going to stay compliant.
If we get, if that stuff settles, will that go by the wayside, do, or is that all part of what?
It settles, that's likely to be a condition, however, changes in the world certainly are worth discussing, right now there's a motion to enforce, if we. Settles. That's likely to be a condition. However, changes in the world certainly are worth discussing. Right now there's a motion to refuse if the week the judge to call them first.
The reason why number 11, I'm not too clear on this is the one stop resolution 4206. I'm not very clear. The one stop career center, all that was shut down during the pandemic and the state, if I'm reading right, didn't reopen what it was needed the most to help people find work or help people find workers. And so I just questioned the renewal and I just want to get an answer to that. The ones I pulled off regarding transportation, the only thing is I would like to hear if it's incorporated in our idea of a total transportation system in Cumberland County. So I know there's certain program guidelines, but I wanted to hear from our transportation person on this. This is a world program. It's NJJAR, which is number 12. Maybe someone here could answer, but the the idea is that we might be taking over. We've been talking. We're going to take over the system with our tax and kind of merge things together. I'd like to hear if there's any game plan, if that's going to happen. And we're resubmitting this for the money. How's this going to the future? We are having a transportation study done, so I wonder if they took that into account also. Is there anybody on the phone? Is Barbara dead?
Barbara's here. She is here. She's in the back.
Oh, sorry, Barbara. Sorry. Should have said that off the bat. You see, there's a couple here.
JAR is a job access reverse community grant, so it's out to workforce development.
Workforce development.
And workforce development, we're talking about where H R B was over to us. That's why I asked. So Barbara.
Yeah, actually, we had a meeting this afternoon with Christie and her staff to talk about how their grant worked with the match money, what they have. So we're in the process of looking at everything, but we still have some questions. They have to provide us some more information, but because we do have some questions on our end about how certain things would work and reports and how they collect data. So we are talking about it.
Was it encouraging the discussion or was it?
Well, to be honest, the major question is the match money for the it's a 50-50 match of where.
Well, why don't we stay there because it's also. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, I just wanted to hear what's going on and you be answered that. But the all these other programs with the well, actually, this really has an effect. The the other programs in transportation, the family, adults, children, and I'll say this in administration, I see all these organizations and I've asked in the past, have we ever approached the Boy Scouts to be part of this program too? But these organizations do the same function and I see that they're not included in this. Have we reached out? I guess, is Dave going to even for Melissa? Sorry, you're okay.
I said, I don't do the Boy Scouts.
Is there any have they been reached out to the Melissa? Melissa Niles, can you answer that please?
Good evening. Melissa Niles, Cumberland County Human Services Director. So these proposals, I'm sorry, resolutions are proposing to renew the 300,000 prevention planning dollars that we get. And so we have the option to renew for one more year. So that's what the first two resolutions are proposing. The planning committee met and they are they completed monitoring. They are satisfied with the way that these programs are performing. The way that the planning board decided to RFP at the beginning, it was to allow for a maximum of $50,000 per agency. So that's why there's so many because it's $300,000. And as far as the transportation, so we have a shared service agreement with workforce development for a transportation program that has two features. One is Uber or Lyft cards or gas cards, and we also help partially fund one of the bus lines for workforce development. So I'm not sure if that one is connected to JAR or not, but we do help pay for like maintenance and salaries to help keep that line running. So that's what these are about to renew that for another year. And then the change order lowering the amount in one area and then increasing it in the others is because rural development, which is also the family shelter, we fund. It's called Keeping Families Together program. It's a counseling and educational program at the shelter for children, for families and children. So one budget line item for family counseling has been underspent. So the shelter has agreed to give that money back. So that money is getting evenly divided to the other contracts who have already spent their money or they're close to spending all of their funds. And as far as the Boy Scouts, we're not opposed to anybody coming on board and applying for funds. They just have not come to the table. I will say that the Girl Scouts has been very successful program and they serve a lot of children with that money.
Well, that's the point. The scouts also supports and does a lot of kids and we're trying to do a lot of these programs. That is a successful organization also. I'm surprised we're not rolling with them being part of it also.
So what we can do is as long as we're not in the period where there's an RFP on the street, we can certainly reach out to the Boy Scouts if somebody can provide a who you think might be the appropriate contact person and let them know about our program before we go out forbid.
The rural development would tell you why they haven't used it as much as they should have?
So they they said they've really been pushing and trying to sell the family counseling component that they just don't want it. However, they they have taken advantage of the educational classes, et cetera, things like that. But the family counseling piece, for whatever reason, the people and the families at the shelter right now just really haven't been interested in it.
They have all the resource they need. At least they can pay.
It's interesting and I always find it very interesting when sitting in meetings, there are so many levels to servicing families and communities and it's really up to that family or that community person or that individual to partake of the services that are available. And I think that what I like about the programs is that theirs is a very hands-on, actual hardworking, we're out there in the house type of program. And it's really dependent on that interaction with the families. And these agencies really step up to help provide the services, particularly transportation, which we just don't have much of in the county. So it's a difficult job to do. And, you know, these agencies help. With the Boy Scouts, I think a lot of these agencies actually come on board and I'm glad to do another outreach because this has been discussed before. There are agencies out there just, I don't know. So hopefully we'll be able to bring those people.
We've spent a lot of money. We also have daycare or whatever. These groups get people involved and whatever they're vetted is successful. I'm not going to edit. All these groups are good. So let's use them to force. So if they do it, they have an issue doing it. So that's just to add to it. So thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The question, this is number 27. This is about the election. I see this. I remember voting on this way back. The cost of bringing someone in to handle the support, it's a lot of money. And I'll say this and I'll say it on the other side. I haven't seen a clean election yet in this county. It takes time for people to get used to these machines and they're getting used to it. But don't we have our own support that we've developed? We don't have to be generalizing. I don't appoint anybody, but maybe if Elizabeth is on the phone or somebody from the board of elections kind of say, because if this is forever, this is a lot of money being spent for bringing tech in, handling these machines. We've never really told to me that this would be so this kind of money would be spent every election to make paid or we always just figure we could probably develop road experts, which we have. I'm looking at the staff here so that someone can look into this because this could be forever. That's the question. I'll ask the question when I'm over there. So if this is forever, and I think this is a response to the last year we were hit with a bill at the end in which for this there was unaccounted for. Is that correct? So now it's in.
Yeah, it was more. Yeah, it was a timing thing for sure because we had to get it before the board, right up before the primary election. It was after the primary election.
Yeah. So at least it's in before, but it just kind of it's a lot of money to bring in an expert to look at their machines and should be running well or well tested over time because they're everywhere. So we're looking into it.
Yeah, quick question. Is that going to impact? I mean, the primary election is June 6th and there does need to be some kind of technical aspect because this is kind of characteristic of you. So will this impact that? I mean, will you be able to continue to work on this?
I think this is to make sure the money is we're putting on the agenda. So by May in the May we'll have it, the money, they're already contracted with the person. So that question, it would be nice to see some of them off of us and we have our own people being the technical. Yeah, so this question. The this is 32. This is designated as gun safety and violence awareness. And voting problems for years, I've questioned this because and the word has changed and I think the prosecutor changed the word justification for. I many things that are mentioned in New Jersey, everyone knows that if you own a gun, you have to get you have to go through a training program to to have a gun and to get a, I guess, program. Joe, you can speak of this better than I. But also that it was talked in the past about kids that are hungry also like to be trained on gun safety while they do this. So.
Basically, what the point is here from the director is that you're lumping gun safety in with violence awareness. And I think possibly if we could talk to the prosecutor on this, if we can make separate the two, maybe in a different month where gun safety would be more of a positive thing as opposed posing into such a negative thing. Because let me think about it. We have your Eagle Scouts who take gun safety. You have hunters who take gun safety requirements. I mean, it's a very labor intensive testing thing just online to get a hunting license. And I don't think anybody's really aware of that. And the same thing with with a gun permit. A gun permit, you have to go through a certain, you know, rigmarole to get fingerprint and so forth. But you also need to take a safety course. NRA puts that out. And I think in this case, it should be a positive thing that one, you have gun safety. And two, violence is something that can happen in many ways. It's not just with a gun. I mean, you see, we've seen now already what different kind of crimes can happen between a van into a crowd of people or a piece of, you know, lumber or just push somebody off the deck of a subway into into an upcoming train. That's still violence. So I just want to make people aware that maybe we should be separating the two and make sure that we're teaching our young ones that they are separate. And if that's the case, then maybe they'll understand that guns don't necessarily need to be violent. So that's all.
Well, just that that gun safety, if you own gun or legally have a gun in the state, you have to be trained. So if you don't have a gun legally in the state, you should have one.
Can I make a comment on this?
Actually, while she's walking up there, I want to say something. I was a business owner and I was. And I see what starts for my own protection, I did get a firearm and I was actually shocked how easy it was. I mean, you had to wait and put the paperwork in. I took it upon myself to take classes, but you didn't have to take classes on gun safety. I took it upon myself.
That's what I wanted to learn.
But I wanted to learn how to shoot it, so I didn't shoot myself. But I was surprised how easy it was to get the firearm without the class, to be honest with you. I don't know if it's different now. This was maybe 2008, 2009, but.
I think they're talking about hunting license. That's what they're referring to.
I know. Still, I'm talking about.
If you're talking about sidearm, if you're talking about sidearm, yeah, anybody can get a sidearm as long as you go through the proper process, fingerprint and so forth. But the NRA suggests highly that you take training lessons along with it. And any respectable safe person who's safety, that's what I'm saying. If we put it into a different month, we can promote that. Take your courses. It's been ever since the concealed license permit has come into effect in the state of New Jersey too, it's being promoted more and more to take training courses. You're right, because you don't want to shoot yourself in the foot.
Just to add a different twist to this, I have taken gun lessons and everybody in my family knows how to shoot. So the issue really isn't those people who are licensed and trained to use guns. It's the fact that there are a lot of communities are inundated with unlicensed weapons and there is violence at the end of a gun when it is abused properly. This is specific that this is making an awareness. I think we've all seen on the news. I mean, if you wonder what people are doing, that every day there's somebody being shot by an unlicensed gun. And I think when we make it make it designate a time to emphasize gun safety and the violence attributed to it, particularly with unlicensed guns, it's a problem in a lot of communities that some of us don't do it or don't drive. And people in many communities right here in the county are very concerned about that. So I think that having it together in that context makes a lot of sense because that's how people see it. That's how people view it. And quite frankly, I just really wish there was a way that the gun laws are moved out and it would be more difficult for people to get guns and that all these straw guns are not sure what the term is, but when people could just go to another state, buy a gun and come back and give it to Bobo, you know, that's a problem. And we need stronger laws of that. So what I'm saying is.
First of all, it's bad and it will go.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is is that we have to really take this very seriously and consider the fact that there's a lot of work needs to be done on all levels.
Well, I would just say, I would just, I would just say this, that in in comparison for things, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Comparison things is that the same thing when you go to a restaurant, you know, there are good restaurants and there are bad restaurants. I just don't want to lump all restaurants into being bad because you happen to have a bad meal. So I'm just trying to clarify that certain things don't necessarily have to be violent and that's the key is violent. Now, yes, hand in hand, what can happen with a firearm can be violent if you use it improperly. Now, if we can separate these a little bit and make people understand that illegal guns, mishandling of firearms, that would be part of the the violence awareness. But then if we want to have our youngsters, you know, just like we do with fishing derby, which is a great event, if you want to bring them all out, you know, and have safety, gun safety and teach these kids that, you know, whoever allows their child to go out, I mean, that's another program that could be instrumental with helping these kids learn that we don't necessarily need something like this to, you know, that is violent. It's not. It's something that was a tool at one time and it's made into something that's violent, just like anything else that's good.
If you come up there, say your name.
Yes. Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer Brenner. I'm the director of the Cumberland County Library. I'm also a member of the Prosecutor's Cumberland County Positive Youth Development Organization and a member of the Violence Reduction Work Group. So I think we're focusing on the wrong thing for this. So really what it is, is it's gun safety and violence awareness, not gun violence awareness. You know, like that's not what it is. What we're saying is we're doing a lot of programming even at the library where we are this here's some free gun locks for people here. The teenagers actually asked that they could go do games with some cops to talk about gun safety and violence. I don't know how many people are aware, but you know, Bridgeton is a very violent. Their high school has a lot of incidents of violence inside the school as well as mill bill and violent, but Bridgeton being the smallest has the most. So it's also letting the community know and parents know, like, be aware of the violence that's happening. Let's talk to our kids. It's not just about kids being safe. It's about everyone being safe. On my hometown is Waynes County, Jersey, there was a kid who just shot another kid by accident, 17 years old, thought he cleaned it, took it to the magazine. Seventeen years old, thought he cleaned it, he took it to the magazine, now opened, pulled it back like he's supposed to, but didn't know really how to do it because he saw his dad do it multiple times, didn't check the chamber, was messed around by, just shot his seventeen-year-old friend, killed him. He's eighteen, he's now being charged with manslaughter. You know, that's something, it's not because he wasn't around guns. It's because he just forgot to check the chamber. I mean, that's why the police have, when they redo it, they go into the hole and shoot just in case there's something stuck in there. You know, that kid didn't know, but if there was a gun lock on there or maybe dad had a gun lock or had it locked away, then maybe he wouldn't have had that. So this is about safety for guns, about giving out free gun locks.
So you're discerning between the two.
Right. So it's not about, listen, yeah, it's not about there's a bunch of guns on the street and there's violence happening with these guns. It's about, hey, there are guns out there, people legally have guns, but let's be safe with them. Let's do a refresher. Let's get the kids, Eddie the Eagle, to come out to the library and do some things for the little kids saying like, you know, if you see a gun, don't touch it, get an adult. So they know, you know, it's just those kind of things. It's also just making the community aware that there is violence and we're trying to work to reduce that violence. You know, I'm part of that work group that we are working with kids who are coming out of. We get a lot of parents that come over. We have a good story time going on right now and we're going to have Eddie the Eagle and an officer over to that event as well.
Officer was responsible.
Right, exactly. So, you know, that's what it comes down to, but it's also making the kids aware because, you know, kids are curious and they see guns and they want to pick it up. I mean, they're curious kids, but it's important that we just keep re-establishing that they should not, like, we should need to ask, talk to adult, talk to adult. There's how many studies that show, like, kids being seen behind the scenes, they still pick it up and look into it even though they're told, don't touch the gun. It's just curiosity. So we need to just make sure that we're doing that. So we support and we are working with the prosecutor in this month, but she has a lot of great things, coffee with the cops set up, you know, some local things happening where everything is in a positive light. It's not saying guns are bad, it's not saying that we shouldn't have guns. It's just saying, let's be safe with the guns that we do have. So, I mean, I know right away we went to the negative because violence is in there, but it's not gun violence. It's just violence awareness in general.
Why do you wholesome these programs?
We're in June, so we're going to have a big flyer out for everything in June. I know that the prosecutor already has a flyer made up, so I'll make sure that she gets it to you guys. But we are trying to do as much as possible just to let people know they need to be safe, right? Those kids, even teenagers, you know, they don't, sometimes they just don't think and they just pick up guns and they're just like, oh, those would be cool, I'll show my friend. And then, you know, unfortunately tragedy hits and their lives are changed forever. So we want to make sure that it's about gun safety, not about taking anybody's gun away, not about telling them not to do it, it's just about safety when you have the guns.
Well, I appreciate that.
So, thank you.
I just want to say that the reason why I started this is that the prosecutor did change their verbiage that she changed for three other years and I really appreciate her doing so. I thank her for that. The, this is thirty-seven, the, again, this department age is part of that. The question is that, it says that we're doing this in Fairfield. Do we do this in other senior centers around the county?
Yes, we do.
This is a new location.
It's a new location.
Well, it's a location that came back in the past, they did have it, but now they have their director's board.
They actually are a new location, but we do have in every senior center, West Cumberland Senior Center does not, we asked them if they wanted to participate, they chose not to participate. And Violence Senior Center, when they were open, they participated. So when they reopen, they'll be able to participate again. In Millville, it's not at the senior center, it's at the high-rise in the community room. But other than that, we're in every senior center, Lawrence Deerfield, Upper Deerfield, Port Haris, Marsh River Township, where we had the luncheon program at ten locations. Plus, we also contract with the Lenape Tribal Luncheon as well at their site, so. It's a free luncheon for anybody over sixty, so. Put that plug.
Forty-three, this is the shared service agreement, that the reason why I'm saying that we have, we were approached by the CDC, the Western Economic Development, and they approached me at a meeting about asking us if the state of New Jersey has imposed the idea that still water management has to happen. Oh, they've changed it years and now our townships have another burden to worry about, the cost each township to buy a machine to clean these, their crates out, to comply, the paperwork. Well, the county does most of our own roads, goes by, let it township roads, has their own program that the driver has his head to mark when they clean out used. So they asked us if we could do it and talk to the public works, we could do it for them. So we put out a shared service. The, I think it's another thing of the county commissioners working with, working with the township to see what we can do, do better. We not only clean it out, provide the information, even teach them how to fill up and pay for them so they don't have to hire a new person, save that money. The only thing we ask in return is if our person is driving on their roads, that they pay for our driver during that period of time. And this way we get some compensation for doing, cleaning their not-county roads. So I'm really pleased, and I'm saying this out in the public because I want to hear the township people to sign up for it because we've done this with the Muskegon Commission, too, to work with the township to help our backlog, backlog, a forty-year backlog of stuff that hasn't been done. So we're trying, the commission's trying to help and we're getting this another place we're doing it, so. This is number forty-eight, this convention, when the authority loads, the commissions were working with the fair people. One of the things they asked our administration, they asked us, that we were taking, we're in the process of upgrading the fairgrounds in Middle Park and now we've removed some things they take for granted, which is fencing. Every organization's going to pay, will, it's always rental, a rental, they'll rent the facility where they're using it. And then they're, they're private entity, but part of that is that they were concerned that we removed the fence. So we said, we're going to waive the fee that they were going to pay this year to provide a fence for because they, they know what they need and there are certain other things that.
Well, they can't, the demolition derby is a major part of the Cumberland County Fair. It has been for decades. And our fair is the oldest fair in the state of New Jersey and this is a huge component of it. They cannot have the demolition derby, they cannot get insured for that without the fencing. The county did remove the fencing without letting them know. So really, they can't, that's a huge component to their event that cannot happen because of the infrastructure that was removed by the county. So now they are trying to obtain fence to rent. They still have not locked that in, they're looking for availability and affordability and so this was the concession to waive the rental fee because now they have to rent the fence, which they were not told would be removed and is not being reinstalled.
We're trying, we're, so we, we're doing.
Currently, it's not part of the plans right now, but it does definitely need to be. And I do believe that some of the members of this board are having a meeting with the consultant tomorrow. And that really is an important part of this. And I don't, I'm not saying that we have to design the fairgrounds just specifically for the fair committee, but I do think that we should strongly consider where we are coming from with our fairgrounds and their needs and that this is really a huge part of Cumberland County culture.
So that she's, that Ms. Lewis expressed this to us and we're making sure we incorporate that into what we're thinking because they are important to us, so.
Can we just go back one second? I have a question about Resolution 14248. These are ARPA funds that we're getting, do we have a plan for them?
Yeah, we got the money, so I was going to put it as a budget by resolution, but no plan for what they're going to be used for. So that'll be a topic for discussion, but if the money came in by wire, I figured I'd throw it in the budget now and then do the resolution now. So whenever we do decide what to use it for, it's there.
All right. Okay, any questions at all at this time at all, I think, so anything on the legal stuff? But we will, we will talk, we will have a, we will have a close session meeting today. Will it really actually put out of that?
No need to.
Wow. All right, so we're not, we're not, we're not going to consider getting it off. So can we have a, can we have a comment?
I'm not in a second.
Can I have a motion or a second motion to overturn the policy? Sorry. All favor. If anyone, please state your name and if you have five minutes and any questions, please come to the board.
Sandy Acevito, Upper Deerfield Township. Director Albrecht, you made a statement about a clean election. What is your definition of a clean election?
Say a clean election is, well, no, actually.
You did say a clean election.
That we've had problems, we've had problems every election. The last time we, for two hours, they put the, it was called, was the, they like saved its time, they programmed it, it was already programmed, they knew it. So the first two hours was our tech people going around the county, rebooting it, setting it up. So people either left or came back later and discouraged people. So that's what I mean by that. That's one example, there's many other examples, but that's one. And that was an error, but that's something that should have been planned, should have been known and especially by the company itself, so they are.
Okay, but just the word, didn't have a clean election just doesn't have a very good connotation.
It's come out without a hitch, is that better?
There you go.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, my question, they do better.
And then the rest of my questions are on the bill list. I noticed some payments to amazon.com. Do we use Amazon often instead of dealing locally?
They have a cooperative contract that we're able to use them for, but it's only for like some small, like IT equipment, occasionally some other small things, but we, for like paper goods and everything we bid out. But not, I don't think there's a tremendous dollar value that we spend with them a year. I can look into that, though.
Well, I see WB Mason here as well. I know WB Mason will match Amazon's prices a few.
Yeah, so the, the rule with using the cooperative contract is legally we have to verify that there is a price savings to use it. So if WB Mason has something on contract for a hundred dollars and we can verify that it's cheaper to use on Amazon, then we're allowed to use it. But that's really the extent of that.
Okay, the payments to Algren for the, is that, are those the payments that were transferred and used from the caresman?
No, that's the, well, not cares, but, so the.
COVID money.
And then Fred Chavone, we had done the biz through the Improvement Authority for the Rowan University Building. We did the capital ordinance, which had a $2 million grant from Rowan University. And then the rest was Chapter 12 funding, but then we did $750,000 from the ARPA. But, yeah, not not the cares, but the ARPA, yeah.
That's the money I'm referring to.
Mm-hmm.
So it is then.
Yeah, I don't know if we've actually charged it against it yet, but inevitably it will be, yes, yeah.
Okay. There's $36,000 and some change for Tri-Tech Systems. What do we buy from them?
I think that's the election ballot sorter. That, we would have had a resolution for that one, I think, the last month or the month before. I know it came before the board, but.
Thank you.
Also, I'm just happy, all the bills we have in there, I'm like, okay, I know these ones.
You see them enough.
Okay, anyone else?
I think Nancy.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield, Fairfield Township. I believe at the next meeting that we are going to have Ordinance 2023-2. And I don't believe we had any discussion on the ordinance establishing the New Jersey County Option Hospital Fee Program for the county of Cumberland.
Ms. Ridgeway, you're right, we had a lot of discussion because this program is over a year, they're talking about it, but you're right, we haven't had a discussion here about it. Do you have any specific questions you want to ask about it?
Well, I just imagine that there's going to be a public hearing on it and I believe that you should give the public some information about it.
Yeah, the consultants that assisted us are supposed to be here at the Upper Deerfield meeting. I don't, I'm not sure if the agenda says it, but there will be a presentation by them. So then the public, after that, we'll have the public hearing so then the public can ask any questions to the consultant to explain and then if the board has any questions to.
They run this program like select counties for in New Jersey and they eventually said that they should offer to other counties. There were two entities, Spear and the Rehab Hospital.
Encompass.
Encompass, that decide they want to be part of this program. We set the rules, I mean, some, we set the rules for it, but they are the ones that have to decide they want to be part of it. And they have, both of them have to decide, not one, both of them, so in order to prove it to happen. Encompass eventually did decide to be part of it and that's how we were forward with it. It does, we receive a benefit from it. We could post eight, post a base eight hundred, nine hundred thousand.
Estimate is one million, one hundred thousand-ish.
We get a piece, a very small piece, but the two organizations get reimbursed for taking it, for, what's the?
So the, so we collect, we assess the fee to the hospitals, the hospitals then remit it to us. We then direct it to the state. The state then uses that as its match towards Medicaid. And then between the match and the Medicaid funds, they then get distributed back to the two hospitals. As far as like the specifics, it's outside my comfort zone to really say like, this is how they determine this. But that's what our level consultants for, that they'll be able to explain it better than I could.
It helps the hospital and the rehab to cover their cost and what they provide, the services they provide, that's the thought, so.
Yeah, it's supposed to give the hospitals more financial resources than they would otherwise have. So the, in Spear, it benefits a lot, Encompass not as much, but it still, it doesn't, it didn't hurt Encompass to be a part of it. And again, I think they were ballparking it, like maybe additional 400 grand a year, but. Spears was a more significant one.
I read the whole ordinance last month when you introduced it. And I did read that there was no cost to the patients. And I read the whole thing and it just sounded like it was going to be a great big circle that the hospital gives the county money, the county keeps some of it and gives the state some of it, and then the state gives some of it back to the hospitals. And it really made a whole lot of financial sense. Thank you.
With that, it helps our regional hospital balance the books, I guess, for the cost of taking care of the, their program, the patients that do it. So it is a benefit to the patients that they can help them and if they're financially healthy, they'll be able to do it in the future. That's the purpose of the program, so.
Sounded like a kickback to the county. Thank you.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
So.
The styles.
Sure.
Melissa Niles, Department Head for Human Services. So when healthcare reform was first being rolled out and introduced, I attended a presentation at, in Trenton, the first of many. And my understanding of it is when it first came out, it was 100% funded by the federal government. And the intention was as healthcare reform and Medicaid expansion continued, the, so the feds contributed 100%, and then each subsequent year, they gradually pull out and then the states have to compensate and match. So my understanding of this is part of that fee is going to help pay for the share of the state that has to help pay for Medicaid through the healthcare expansion. That's my understanding of it. So it's not a kickback. Thank you.
Eddie, what else?
Mission to close?
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Get it out and we will be going to the close session.
I'll give you the resolution first.
All right.
Resolution 2023-315, resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Senator Byron and Bear Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-12. Matters relating to the. Matters relating to the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property or the investment of public funds, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, matters relating to the employment relationship. Do I have a motion in second?
So...
Second.
All favor?
Rule call.
Oh, rule call.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Omero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Before you go, we're going to move. You guys can hack it if you want.
We're not coming back, are you? You guys can stay.
We're trying something.
But there's no action at this point.